We are now recording.
Okay, good afternoon, everyone. Madam Secretary, if you can confirm that we have a quorum I was to order.
Yes, we have a quorum.
Okay, great. Do we need a roll call?
Yes.
Okay.
Broughton.
Present.
Chen. Chen. I see Highland may have dropped off. We will need Highland in order to have a quorum, so let's.
Luisa, we have Sean Selig here with me, so he's gonna, um, he's gonna answer the court, the, the roll call.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. Sisneros.
Here.
Delacruz. Duran, I'm sorry, and Dylan.
Here.
Duran.
Here.
Selig.
Here.
Shelby.
Present.
So.
Present.
Stallings.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. This is a special meeting of the Board of Trustees of the State Bar of California. We have two items that are open, I'm sorry, two items on our agenda. One is an open session item, and the second is a closed session item. Before we get to open session, I mean, open the floor to public comment, is there anybody either on the Zoom or any of our physical locations who wishes to address either of the items on the agenda for today? If so, you can indicate your willingness by, you really your desire to address the board by using the raise hand function in Zoom, or just speak up if you're at one of our physical locations.
Chair Duran, I see one hand raised. Paula.
Okay, Paula, once your, your mic is activated, you'll have three minutes to address the board on either of these two items. The floor is yours.
Is that right? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I was wondering, isn't it a conflict of interest to retain a law firm for all three cases?
So again, this is the opportunity to address the board. You're welcome to tell us whatever is on your mind, any concerns that you have. I can't, I can't tell you that we're going to be responding to questions at this time. Are you speaking to one of the agenda items?
Uh, no, I was just asking a question.
Okay. Uh, I, I think without further information, we not going to be able to respond to the question. You're free to, and welcome you to, to contact us by email or by phone at the State Bar offices. You can find that information on our website. If not, we'll move on. Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else from the public wishing to address the board? Seeing none, move ahead into our agenda. We have one consent calendar item, item fifty dash one, approval of specified contracts under government, I'm sorry, Business and Professions Code six thousand eight point six. I see that staff has requested to pull this item from the consent calendar to offer some clarification on the item. Mr. Mazur, this is you if you're ready.
Yes, that is correct. Um, this item requests approval for a single contract for legal services with the Wagstaff firm for representation in several matters. The contract amount listed in the agenda item memo is a hundred thousand dollars, but that was actually just a placeholder amount that was left there in error. The con- the item should not have listed a fixed amount, as there's simply no way to know at this point how much time will be required for the various matters. Um, as you know, our Office of General Counsel very closely manages outside counsel and will ensure that all costs incurred are fair and reasonable. Therefore, the corrected request is for the board to approve the contract with the Wagstaff firm without a specified amount. This correction will be reflected in the meeting minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mazur. Does any member of the board have any questions or comments on this, on this item?
I, I have a question based on a change.
Bestie, Tony, go ahead.
Uh, thank, thank you, Chair Duran. Um, I, I'm just curious, how common is it to approve contracts with, um, open-ended contracts with, with no limits of hours or of amount? Uh, and I'm asking that, I'll ask my second question is, is it possible to establish a certain amount now and then be open to come back to the board if, if that amount is being approached? I, I'm just not used to, uh, being asked to approve open-ended contracts with, with, uh, no limits at all.
Uh, I believe that is generally the case, however, for legal services contracts of this nature. Um, I believe it is, uh, fairly common to just establish, um, a, an agreement with the firm for fixed, uh, rates without setting a, a specified, uh, amount. Oh, I see Vanessa has joined if she wants to, uh, comment on that question.
Yes, um, that's, Mark has asked a perfectly good question, reasonable question. Generally, we endeavor for, for most every other kind of contract to, you know, have a, a limit to it. When it comes to litigation contracts, uh, which I'm not sure the legislature intended be included in the fifty thousand approval. Anyway, it is hard to, um, al- always to set caps because, uh, in between board meetings now and the next one or the one after that, uh, fifty thousand dollars could get spent pretty quickly if a, a litigation is very active. So we would need to be reconvening the board frequently every time we hit fifty thousand. That's, you know, only like, was that a hundred hours or something? Um, and, and if you have a few people in a firm working on something, uh, that would not be manageable. But I think you, you know, um, I'm pretty conservative in, um, expenditures of outside counsel, so this office is very careful in its, um, oversight.
Thank you, Vanessa. Sonia, I saw your hand go up and then go down.
Uh, yeah, I was going to ask if you could establish a cap, but it has been answered. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for either Steve or Vanessa? Any discussion or debate on the item? Can I have a motion, please?
This is Brandon, I'll move them up item.
A second.
Motion by, uh, Stalling, second by Dylan. May I have the roll, please?
Broughton.
Yes.
Chen.
Yeah, you, you, you can talk.
I'm here.
Okay.
I'm not in here, I'm only in here. I'm not on my computer.
Highland, uh, the, the motion to approve the contract with the Wagstaff firm.
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
Sisneros.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes. Delacruz, Dylan.
Yes.
Slugg.
Yes.
Shelby. I'm sorry, is that a night?
I, yes.
There you go.
So.
I'm an I.
Stallings.
Yes.
Tony.
Hi.
Okay.
I, nine I's. No, no's the motion care.
Thank you, trustees. Uh, thank you, staff. Okay, that takes us to, um, our closed session, which is a discussion regarding the appointment of the general counsel, closed under the authority of government code section one, 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 two, six, subsection A one. At this time, the board is going to convene into closed session to discuss that item, and we will come back into open session at the end. There's a, uh, to report whether there's anything reportable. Trustees, I'm hoping that we all have a link to a closed session. Um, I do not see it. Do you folks know whether you have the link to the closed session?
The trustees should be receiving the chart, like I just sent it.
Uh, hold on. Um, uh, let me, let me just put a pause in the proceedings, I apologize. I've got an email from a member of the public, Mr. Daniel Everett, Everett, who attempted to offer public comment by phone. Um, and I apologize for overlooking or not making a call for, uh, public comment by phone. I, I should have done so. If there is anybody on the phone who wishes to, to address the board, you can unmute yourself by pressing star six, star nine.
Start, star nine.
Star nine. Mr. Everett, if you're still there, we're going to give you a few seconds to, uh, address the board.
Chair Duran, I do see a hand raised. Colin, use one.
Okay, great. Uh, as soon as, as soon as you're on, you'll have three minutes. I'm assuming it's Mr. Everett. Go ahead, sir.
Uh, yes, I won't necessarily confirm, uh, that this is Daniel Everett just because of the, the nature of what I'm about to say. But I will say that, uh, given that this, uh, public comment is in relation to, uh, possible, uh, claims brought uh, in relation to, uh, the data breach, I, I will say that I, I have been disappointed in the process in that, uh, the six zero zero seven B three cases, which uh, represent the possible most sensitive areas of the data breach, uh, which occurred, uh, in those cases, there's supposed to be representation provided by the State Bar of outside counsel. The specific purpose of the counsel is to protect the rights of privacy, uh, of the, um, the, the parties there. And I just think that there is an issue here of whether, um, the folks involved in those proceedings have been appropriately, uh, given counsel who might also uh, be able to represent them or at least do something about the privacy breaches. The only other way to go about it is to, uh, essentially for a litigant to say that they are a participant in these proceedings, which in and of itself, uh, constitutes some sort of breach of the rights of privacy. So I did want that issue, uh, to be there and understood by the board.
Okay, thank you. Uh, heard loud and clear, and we appreciate you taking the time to address this. Is there anyone else? Is there anyone else either on the phone or on Zoom who'd like to address the board? Okay, seeing none, we're going to convene in a closed session, and we'll see you all on the other side. Thanks.
Hello, everyone. This is Sean and Jose. Can you hear me?
Hi, Sean. So the the board is now using a different link to meet in closed session.
Oh, I thought this was the close. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We are now recording.
Sorry, I thought I had seen Ruben pop up.
I'll pause the recording for now.
All right, you know.
Okay, we're now recording.
All right, this is Brandon Stallings, Vice Chair, Board of Trustees, Chair of the General Counsel Search Committee. We are coming out of closed session. There is nothing to report other than we are adjourning the closed session to Monday, June 13th at 4:00 PM, from 4:00 PM to 5:00 PM. And so that notice of adjournment will also be posted on the Calbar website. All right, thank you, everybody, for your attendance. And we are adjourned until Monday, June 13th at 4:00 PM. Thank you. Okay, bye, everybody.